If everyone could please take their seats, we're about to begin. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Vermont's 232nd Town Meeting Day. It started in 1791, which happens to be the same time that Bakersfield was founded, for those who don't know. My name's John West. I've had the privilege of being your moderator this past year, which honestly was pretty easy since we didn't have a town meeting day. I'd like to thank all of you for attending today, and also thank the past moderators and officials over the years for their service to our wonderful town. Also, I'd like to say, welcome to post-COVID. This is very nice to actually have a town meeting day. My understanding is there's a lunch at the Historical Society. Is someone here from the Historical Society?
There's a lunch over there for your newly break, and it's by donation. It's a potluck dinner. Potluck buffet.
Thank you, once again. Having said that, let's cover the basics of how the meeting's gonna run. Robert's Rules is what we use to run the meetings. I'm sure all of you are quite versed in it, but we'll go over some points. The basic rules will be followed for today's meeting, except where Vermont's state law takes precedence. We, the body, cannot change the state law. However, we can within Robert's Rules, with a two-thirds to vote suspend the Robert's Rules. An article must be moved and seconded by the body, and then restated by myself or whoever is voted in as moderator, before it is under consideration and debate on the article may begin. The person who made the motion to move the article has the right to speak first in this debate if desired. Articles may only have one amendment to it at a given time. Doesn't mean you can't have multiple, but we have to finish the first amendment before we put in a second. We must finish... Oh, there you go. Okay, before another one. That was easy enough. Once you've spoken on an article or an amendment during an open session, discussion session, you will not be recognized a second time until everyone else has an opportunity to speak once, and that's within the rules on any given motion. The other part is your discussion time. If you're going to speak, it's up to 10 minutes. We can, at that time, someone from the gallery can request to extend someone's time, but I'm not going to be rude, but at 10 minutes, we're going to cut you off. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed to the moderator. That person will do their best to recognize you in the order that you raise your hand. Please wait until you're recognized to speak. If I'm the moderator, I'm a face person, not a name person, so I'm just gonna point. Unless I've met you 50 to 100 times, your name's not sticking in my head. I'm sorry. Also, when you speak, stand up if you're able to, and please state your name at the start of it. Speak clearly. I don't know if we have someone who wants to hand out the wireless mic. If someone's willing to volunteer for that, to just hand the wireless mic to the speakers.
Otherwise, I'll be right here.
Instead of having to walk to him, you know, if someone's willing to do that, that would be greatly appreciated. Your comments or speeches must be confined to the merits of the current discussion and/or article. You are not to engage with the person speaking before you, and please avoid anything that would be considered a personal attack on a member or the body and their motives. Vermont law prohibits consideration of any articles that have not been warned. We cannot take any binding actions under the final article, "Other Business." We also can't do anything monetarily. We cannot amend a warned article to deal with business that has not been warned. Reconsideration of an article is allowed by Vermont state law up to the point we begin working on the next article to reopen. To reopen an article, reconsideration, whether it was voted down or passed, a person on the prevailing side would have to make a motion to reopen consideration of an article. So in other words, Tammy here voted yes for something, and that passed. She would have to be the person or one of the people who voted yes for the article to pass to bring it back up for reconsideration, not someone who voted no. If there's a concern, moderator is not ruling... If there's a concern the moderator is not ruling properly or doing something out of order, please let us know. You have the right to challenge the rulings. Only registered voters of the town may vote at Town Meeting Day. I ask, at this time, those who are not registered voters in the town of Bakersfield to raise your hand and be recognized. Is anyone here who's not a voter? Just two? Okay, excellent. So, your role today is as an active observer. You may not take part in the vote nor discussion lest someone wants a motion to suspend the rules. Yes?
If they're resident in Bakersfield, they can register to vote today.
Today, right. You can register if you want.
Yeah, same-day voter registration.
With regards to the town meeting, if you're not registered today or prior, you're not able to join the discussions. You're here as an observer, unless the body, two-thirds of the body, decide to suspend the rules and allow you. Okay, so that's the general guidelines. Let's please all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. Okay. Thank you for coming back. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. It's been our custom to reflect before we begin. Thank you. And now, without further ado, let's get on to the business of today. The legal voters of the town of Bakersfield, Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the town house, should say hall, in the said town of Bakersfield on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, 10:00 a.m., in the forenoon to consider and act on the following articles and vote by Australian ballot for Article 2 and 25. The polls are officially open and will remain open for Australian ballot till 7:00 p.m. this evening. Article 1, to elect the moderator for the ensuing year. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Moderator, Paul Stanley, nominate John West.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Brian Steele, second up.
Thank you. Nominations don't need seconds, but thank you. Anyone else? Are there any other nominations? No. Okay. All those in favor of John West being moderator, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Thank you. We're gonna move to Article 2, which is to vote by Australian ballot for the final, for the following officers and questions. Select Board Member, three-year term. B, Select Board Member, two-year term. C, Lister, three-year term. D, Auditor, one-year remaining term of the three-year term. E, Auditor 2... I'm sorry, Auditor 2. I apologize. Go back. D, Auditor 1 of a three-year term. Auditor 2 is E of a three-year term. Auditor 3?
Auditor, three-year term.
Wow, okay. That's what I thought at first. I'm gonna back this bus up. I apologize.
Just keep on going.
Auditor for two-year term. G, Planning Commission, one-year of a two-year term. H, Planning Commission, two-year term. Yes?
Josh Goss. I move to suspend the rules that entered here with the introduction at this time to move Article 25 to Article 3 so that I can give the voters an explanation of that article before it is voted on, as it's not very well described.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. Do we have a second? Run to Churchill.
I have a second motion.
This requires two-thirds of a vote to suspend the rules. The easiest way is if we stand, so we can get a count. So all those in favor, please stand. All right. We'll make it easy. We'll do it for logistics. All those against? Please sit the standing, and all those against, please stand. Glad you asked. Thank you very much. May have been easier. Okay, so, Josh?
Yes.
I'll read Article 25, and then you can go into your explanation, since we're moving it, right? You said you wanted to move it? Let me just quickly read what the article is. Article 25, shall the town of Bakersfield adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA 2680, D in brackets. Go ahead, Josh.
So, as it reads, all articles that are budgeted, those are roadwork and general expenses and items that could be put into, such as roadwork, the paving grant, and the bridge repair fund, which we have put $10,000 into every year since... When I was little, like, remember back then? This is not to take away town meeting at all. This is historic. That earliest book I acquired, 1942. Yeah. I just wanted to be clear. This is not to take away from that. This is to give all of the people that cannot be here today, whether it be for work or other family reasons that can't get here until later, the option to vote on those budgeted items. This is also, with this, it brings along multiple informational meetings, so that you would know and could question budgeted items at those times. Again, those would be, just like our regular Select Board meetings, they would be available via Zoom, and you could have input via Zoom. At town meetings, you cannot. That is a state law, not ours. Everything, you go to page 14. Everything would still be listed here. This is our five-year budget plan. Everything would still be listed here, and as I said, it could be brought up at those informational meetings, adjusted if necessary, or the explanations can be given. I just wanted everybody to have a clear understanding of what they're voting on. We're not voting to get rid of town meeting. We're voting to give everybody in town a chance to have an opinion. And that's it.
Open for discussion, Bill Irwin?
Yes. I have Bill Irwin, Bakersfield. So I'm glad to hear that it was not everything that has a dollar right in there, because that would eliminate town meetings. And I definitely actually cherish town meeting. This is my favorite day of the year. But I... And I like that you're moving those two highest-budget items to a vote that can be recorded for all from the time polls open to the time polls close. So I'm in favor of that, but I'd like to have it potentially amended. Maybe we could talk about that, to ensure what you said just now occurs, and that is that there be some meetings beforehand, to informational meetings, as you described them, to ensure that we're getting that out, everybody can talk about it. And then lastly, I wonder if we couldn't leave it here, have the vote for it there, but make it informational, so there's discussion at this time that's not available if all you're doing is going in there and checking the ballot. That's it. Thank you.
I'm gonna come back. Can you state your name, please?
Joy Don. From where to where are we? Which articles are we talking about?
So it would be the road budget, or roadwork, so the $400,000 budget that is there. What that... The only things that could be put in with that would be the grant funds, you know, the matching grants for the bridge or the paving. It would basically just take out that Section 8 through 14. Brigham Library would still be voted from the floor. Maple Grove Cemetery, Historical Society, would all still be from the floor.
Okay, and my other question is, you said we would have an informational meeting so that we could make adjustments if we needed to. Is that legal to adjust that at the informational meeting? I don't think it was.
No. Informational meeting is just what your budget is.
So it would be the budgetary meetings, along by information.
So exactly, this is a town meeting. There would be no amendments to the amount. You couldn't amend them down if you wanted to. You simply would have a yes or no vote on?
Correct. Those would be during the budgeted, the budget meetings, which are open and public for now anyway.
Anyone else? All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm not gonna stand. But you and Mayor, and I have to continue on with Joy's question. So, we don't get to adjust the budget amount that we're voting on today? Is that the idea?
Today, we can. This is for...
If this article passes, we'll be voting by Australian ballot, not through discussion and so on.
For next year.
Yeah, next year. You'd be voting for Australian ballot. Today, we're voting off the floor for the budget.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure it says for next year.
Anyone? I saw some others, yes?
Brenda Westom. So are you saying, if, let's say, something did not pass, would we have another voting session?
Correct. That's where we would hope that we would have the attendance during the budget meetings and the informational meetings.
But if it can't get adjusted?
It can get adjusted during the budget meetings. Then, once you've filled your budget with the adjustments according to how people feel, then you have the informational meetings that explain it to the people that show up or attend via Zoom, and then it is brought to town meeting as a valid item. It actually... Bill, you asked about multiple meetings, just like the school budget, required by a state to have meetings for that.
Once they have their budget meetings and they set the amount for whatever the Australian ballot question will be, once it's warned, it cannot be changed.
Which is like 30 days ahead, right? 30 days ahead.
So it'd have to happen prior to that, and the informational meeting wouldn't happen until before town meeting. It was like a week before, five days, something like that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Carrie Kleger. I'm just curious about the statistics to back this up, whether or not this would lead to an improvement. So what is the turnout for current informational meetings versus our turnout for vote?
So, Kathy, can you speak? So, voting... The last voting number we had was approximately 600?
If you look in your town report, it should say how many ballots were cast for last year, because we did it by paper.
Yep.
It wasn't 200?
Yeah, so we had... What's in here does not include people who actually left things blank. So for the roadwork, we had 152 people's vote by Australian ballot, yes, and 45, no.
And how many people come to informational meetings?
That's entirely up to...
I don't know how many they had.
I believe you're asking historically?
Yes.
Historically? How many people show up for town informational meetings? We haven't had one. If I could speak out here.
I think we had a really good turnout when we tried to do the 18-month budget. I think we had probably 150 people here. Yeah, they were all ready to drag us out to the town spread. So, I can guarantee you that if there's something that is disagreed with, the people will show up. If it's agreed with, then...
Did you have any...
Ken Mason and John Rodd. It seems to me that this is giving us a chance to be proactively involved in the budget-making process rather than just reacting when they come to town meeting.
Yes? You're on your second. I'm sorry. Hang on one moment. I just saw someone... I'm just ready to... Yes, do you want to first?
Felicity Dion. I appreciate the idea of getting more input and having people have a chance to vote on topics, especially around money. Maybe this is a conversation that we've had many times, but I personally like having the discussion and hearing about it. I also concern that it's on a Tuesday, town meeting, and a lot of people work. I happen to be a teacher, so I can attend this, but if I didn't, it would have to take a personal day. So, I know this isn't really the time to talk about this, but I would like to put out there again the idea of moving town meeting to a Saturday to be more inclusive to everyone in town.
Fully noted, we just need to keep within the confines of what we're discussing now.
I'd like to amend the article for clarification to beginning with March of 2024, so that we legally have that not binding through today.
You're talking Article 25? Well, Article 25 is stating that we're voting if you want to move it through Australian ballot or not. It would not be a part of today's election at all. Town meeting, you will be voting on the budget today because it would be post, it would be post the election process and Town Meeting Day process.
Just to clarify, this isn't a vote from the floor. It's already, Article 25 is a valid item. So you can't change the ballot. This is strictly for your information, for you to ask questions. There's nothing changing today. This will all happen 2024.
Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted, Bill Irwin, Bakersfield, I just wanted to note that you're taking a chance that if you put them as line items there, that everybody will vote no for most of them, because it's really easy to say, well, I don't want anybody spending anywhere. If you keep it here in town meeting, you can have those discussions here. People get their questions answered, clarified. Then they don't vote it down. They vote for it right here with 60 or 70 people who are deliberating it. So I think you're taking a big risk to have those things, several hundred thousand dollars worth of small items between those two, top and bottom of the list, being voted down.
Yep. That was one of the things that we took into consideration before putting this here. But as we are, we're here to represent the town, and one of the main complaints, concerns that I have received and other board members have received is that if you work and you don't get Town Meeting Day off because you're not a teacher or any of the other positions that allow you to have Town Meeting Day off, your voice isn't here. It isn't counted, and you don't get a say on what your taxes may go up. It is a big risk, but I think everybody deserves a say.
Yes?
Cheryl DeRue. My question is, if all of these items are then voted down, adopt all budget articles, are they still going to be spelled out as they are here?
On page 14. We voted down, it's spelled out?
No, I mean that when people go to, if they can't make the informational meetings and they go to vote, will they be spelled out to say, shall the town appropriate $400,000 for roadworks? And have it itemized so that they can choose? Or will it all be a lump sum that they don't know what money goes where?
Yeah, I see what you're saying now. That is up for debate, and that could be one of the things that is discussed during the budgeted meeting that we have prior. I agree. I would like to see what each line item is, just like it is here. And it just makes for more counting, is all it really is. So I would see where it'd be an issue as well as people that get to vote.
Okay, thank you, Josh. We're gonna move on. Next article is Article 3, to act on the reports of the various town officers as contained within the current financial statement in your document. Please note, there is no action on these reports. These are just informational, and they're gonna be what they're gonna be. Do I have a motion to move? Do I have a second?
Brian Steele.
We have a motion to move and second it for Article 3, to act on the reports of various town officers as contained within the current financial statement. Yes, sir?
I have a question. I guess I saw something in the report involving... It was the Brigham Academy, and I gotta think, or was it the Archifunds? It was an expenditure with B&amp;O, a company named B&amp;O, and I was wondering what that was. B&amp;H. B&amp;H Video and... What was that about?
I mean, honestly, I'm not supposed to answer. I know what it is. And B&amp;H Photo is the recording equipment and the sound equipment we use to record every meeting. Select Board meetings, Planning Commission meetings, and such.
Just wanted to understand what it was.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
We had an outside audit this year. The stuff that is in this book is not from that firm. When that stuff is available, it'll be here in the office, and it will be on our website.
Any other questions or corrections? Yes?
The outside audit would correct the thing, like on page 16, where it says park water, because the cemetery commission pays that. So it looks like it's double. It's water for the park, $160. Not much, but it's showing up in two places, under Town General Expenses and also under page 30.
We did audit it, so we did put it in.
Okay, so...
They audit.
These are not gospel.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks.
Yes, Vera.
You're alert. Well, there's one under the cemetery, right? But there's also one, the town park did... You know why? If it goes, it's under the, to separate individual things, it shows up?
It's one shut-off.
Yeah, but is it... It's under the town. The town paid it, but if it was...
This cemetery commission paid it on page 30?
The cemetery paid. They're all... The town park has, there's water. There's water to that parcel.
Okay, which town park are we talking about?
The Lockwood Lock.
The town...
The Lockwood Lock.
The what?
The Lockwood Lock.
I understood they didn't have water, but they got...
There's a line to it, and we've changed that now so that there won't be a charge for that.
Okay, thank you, Vera.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, corrections? All right. I apologize. Article 4, to elect the remaining town officers as required by law. Yes, sir?
That's kind of a no. I think we need to hold on. It was moved and seconded.
I apologize. You're accurate. So, we're looking for a vote on Article 3, to act on the reports of various town officers as contained in the current financial statement. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, say no. And so carries. Article 4, to elect the remaining town officers as required by law. We're gonna start with A, First Constable. Do we have any nominations for the First Constable of the town of Bakersfield? Any nominations? You know, I've watched videos over the last several years, and there's never a nomination. Just go inside.
They're all waiting for second.
That's right. Having said that, with no nominations, we'll postpone this indefinitely if so decided by the body here. So for those who wish to postpone this roll indefinitely, please state... Yep.
...information. In the past, it has been up to the Select Board to find the stuff... For information, in the past, it has been up to the Select Board to find the First Constable. Any, any office that is left empty, basically, they get the pick.
Yeah.
Correct, but we're gonna suspend it from here and then it goes to the Select Board to try to find someone in that role?
Just wanted to clarify that.
I apologize, thank you. If there's no, well, let's go back to go forward. Since there's no nominations, if there's no objections, we'll close nominations? All right, since we have no nominations and seeing how there's no nominations, we'll be postponing this indefinitely with a vote to, to agree, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, say no. Thank you. The second position, Second Constable, which is in the past been identified as the Animal Control Officer. I'm looking for nominations, the Second Constable, are there any nominations? No?
Volunteers.
Any nominations for volunteers? That's a good way to put it? No? Oh, if there's no objections, we'll close nominations? Once again, seeing how there's no nominations, we'll be postponing this post indefinitely with the vote of aye for all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, say no, please? Thank you. Collector of Delinquent Taxes, do we have any nominations?
You're aware, I will nominate Kathy Westcomb.
Kathy Westcomb's been nominated, are there any additional nominations? Anyone else? Yes, Collector of Delinquent Taxes. Anyone else? If there are no objections, we'll close nominations? We have two options, we can either do a voice vote for Kathy Westcomb or we can have her do a, strike a single ballot? Yes?
Let's do a voice vote.
Okay. For the voice vote, for the position of Collector of Delinquent Taxes, for Kathy Westcomb, for all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Or no? Thank you. Thank you again, Kathy.
Yes.
For the position of Grand Juror, we're opening nominations, are there any nominations? Any volunteers?
Quick question.
Yes?
I know most of us have heard this explanation more than once, but could someone please explain what the Grand Juror does?
Absolutely.
Do we have her, I'll tap that? On the website, is that on the thing about what all the positions are? I don't remember exactly where it is, but...
I know Lance has given him a few years in a row, Grand Juror, do you remember?
Larry Krieger sent it for maybe...
No, I meant he's given the explanation.
In the event of a major trial where a Grand Juror would be selected, the Grand Juror will serve for the Town of Bakersfield.
All right? Yes, sir?
I nominate Larry Krieger.
For the position of Grand Juror?
Yes.
Larry Krieger has been nominated, are there any other nominations? No? Seeing how we have no other nominations, we'll move forward with the voice vote. For all those in favor for Larry Krieger to be Grand Juror, say aye.
Aye.
And against, say no. Thank you again, Larry Krieger, for your assistance with Grand Juror. Town Agent, for the position of Town Agent, do we have any nominations? Town Agent? I copied it off of twenty twenty-three, you're on twenty twenty-two, fourth page. Town Agent? Sorry, thank you. Again, nominations for Town Agent?
I hate to say this, but I couldn't, people here might like to know what a Town Agent does.
Good point. Does anyone have an explanation of the Town Agent position? Hang on a moment, we're going to look it up.
So, I think the Town Agent, like if we were to sell property and the Select Board wanted to nominate someone to sign it, it would be the Town Agent. There's other things too, but that one sticks out.
Is that acceptable, Bill, or do you want Lance to continue?
Should they also sign brands or is that the same?
Select Board.
Okay.
So they're not actually handling money, is that the idea?
Correct.
They're spending money on behalf of the town.
Correct. They could just begin to sign something on their own, they'd have to have the Select Board approve.
Got it.
Any other questions regarding Town Agent? Okay, moving to nominations again, is there any nominations for Town Agent now that we know what they do?
Oh, lawyer, I nominate the Select Board.
The Select Board?
They got all great blessed evil.
Okay, wow. All right, we're gonna go, I, I don't believe we can elect like a whole Select Board, if I'm correct. We're looking for an individual, however, it will default to the Select Board either way. So seeing how we have no individual nominations, what we'll do is move forward with the vote to suspend or postpone this indefinitely and move it to the Select Board. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, say no. Thank you. Cemetery Commissioner, five-year term, look for nominations? Are there any nominations for Cemetery Commissioner, five years?
I'd like to nominate Harmon Mayo, Harmon has served on it for several years, and... Doesn't want it? He, he always says he doesn't want it, but I think he'd take it. He brings a lot to the table, and last year he's the one that spread the crushed stone on the, on the lower road.
Okay, well, we have a nomination for Harmon Mayo? Is there any other nominations? We'll move to a voice vote. For position of Cemetery Commissioner, five years' term, Harmon Mayo has been nominated. For all those who agree, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, say no.
No.
Come on, no, the ayes. The ayes have it, appear to have it? And they do. We'll move to Library Trustee, three-year term. Are there any nominations for Library Trustee, three-year term?
I nominate Jennifer Sanchez.
I'm sorry?
Jennifer Sanchez.
Jennifer Sanchez. Any other nominations on Jennifer?
Dana Barkley.
Any other nominations? With no, with no objections, we'll close nominations? For the position of Library Trustee, three-year term, Jennifer Sanchez has been nominated. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, say no. Thank you, Jennifer, the ayes appear to have it, and they do. For the position of Trustee of Public Funds, three years' term, do I have any nominations? Yes, sir?
Lance Lawyer, I'd like to nominate Patrick Evans.
Patrick Evans?
Patrick Evans is not here today, he's having surgery, but he is aware.
Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Gary Foot, Gary has a little understanding of financial and administrative...
Issues that deal with trustees of public funds.
Any other nominations? Okay, so this is our first move to a paper ballot? Your choices are between Patrick Evans and Gary Foot? Yes, sir?
I'd like to withdraw.
We'll move to a voice vote? We came close, we're gonna move to a voice vote? For the position of Trustee of Public Funds, three years' term, the nomination was Patrick Evans. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and Patrick Evans, thank you for your service. Brigham Academy Committee Person, three-year terms, do I have any nominations? Any nominations? I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Lance, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Cheryl Erwin DeRue.
I'll try that, okay. Are there any other nominations for the Brigham Academy Committee Person, three-year terms? With no objections, I'll close nominations? For the position of Brigham Academy Committee, three-year term, Cheryl Erwin DeRue has been nominated. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it? The ayes have it, thank you, Cheryl. Moving on to Article Five, Shall the Town Vote to Have Its Property Taxes Due on October 2nd, 2023? I'm looking for a motion to move?
Do I have a second?
Thank you, the motion has been made, moved and seconded. Article Five, Shall the Town Vote to Have Its Property Taxes Due on October 2nd, 2023? It's open for discussion, any discussions or comments? Yes?
Can I make an amendment?
Wish to amend Article Five to read?
I would like it to read the first Monday in October, since that's what we do it, then we wouldn't have to vote this every year. It's always the first Monday.
Is there a second to Kathy's request of amendment?
Second, you're there.
Thank you. The amendment has been moved and seconded to change the article to read, Shall the Town Vote to Have Its Properties Taxes Due on the first Monday in October, 2023?
Every year.
Every year, I apologize, every year. Well, they're only voting for this year.
If we put it on to be the first Monday in October from now on, whatever, I don't know what the wording would be, we wouldn't have to vote this every year.
That's, that's changing the context of the warrant, though, what's been warned. You can't change the context completely. I'm sorry?
No, we're, I'm, is all the other town reports aren't right in the area, I didn't ask this question.
But we need to warn it properly with the thirty days notice if we're gonna change the context to remove it. I believe.
All that we're not doing is we're not asking a date. It's still first Monday.
The term every year is the problem. If you remove, I believe, that's four, it's the same problem. If you remove every, if you remove it to the first Monday of 2023 and then move it to next year to put it on for every year, comments?
Brian Steele, can we suspend the rules on this and have this happen, or is that not possible?
My understanding is, I mean, we can suspend the rules to move things up and down and certain things, but we can't suspend the rules, if I'm accurate, to, I'll look in the book. But if I'm correct, I don't believe we can change what's been warned. I mean, we're really changing the, the definition of that, that Article Five.
Understood, just trying to find the name.
And some folks have been here a lot longer than me.
Could we work on amending it for next year, for it going on to be the first Monday and then...
Move forward, and I agree, Bill, that's what I was saying.
We can vote on this one, and then next year I'm just gonna put first Monday.
So Kathy, are you removing your amendment?
I am.
Kathy has so removed her amendment, gone back to the original Article Five, which reads, Shall the Town Vote to Have Its Property Taxes Due on October 2nd, 2023? I believe it's been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna move to vote, for all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do, Article Five passes. Article Six, Shall the Town Authorize the Select Board to Set a Tax Rate to Cover Expenses as Voted?
You embarrassed so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, you're a lawyer.
Thank you. Article Six has been moved and seconded, Shall the Town Authorize the Select Board to Set a Tax Rate to Cover Expenses as Voted? Is there any discussion? Seeing how there's no discussion, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And against, please signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it, Article Six is carried. Article Seven, Shall the Town Authorize the Select Board to Borrow Money in Anticipation of Taxes? Do I have a motion to move?
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
You're on seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded for Article Seven, Shall the Town Authorize the Select Board to Borrow Money in Anticipation of Taxes? Open for discussion? Since there appears to be no discussion, we'll move to the vote. For those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do, Article Seven passes. Article Eight, Shall the Town Appropriate $400,000 for Road Work? Do I have a motion to move?
I'll make that motion, you're a lawyer.
Do I have a second? Todd Cosgrove seconded. The motion's been made to move and seconded for Article Eight, Shall the Town Appropriate $400,000 for Road Work? Is there any discussion? Bill?
Does the road work get any sort of report to the community? It seems like we are voting for a finite amount of money that it would be good to have some accountability to this body. Where we ask all these other people that we give, like Northwest Regional Planning Commission, we give fifteen hundred dollars, we get a report from them that tells them, tells us everything they do for us. And unless you attend every Select Board meeting, you really don't know what the road crew does. It would be nice if it could list, like, we fixed this bridge, we graded these roads this many times, and just put a report in. Because I think we're making a decision about a lot of money without really a lot of information, and it would be useful for that.
I'm sorry, can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Jessica Lewis.
And you're saying?
There is a road account budget, I think Wiki20 is something more specific on the details other, besides just what the money amounts are, like, page twenty-two.
Please state your name? I don't even see your hand up, thank you. And your comment was?
There's a delineation of what the road accounts would do for on pages twenty-two and twenty-three.
Those are, those are dollars, because I'm thinking just a description of what they do.
Yes, Josh?
Josh, so every weekly, when they turn in, there is a white folder, binder, in the room that has their weekly maintenance, what they've done, what roads they've covered, how much time they spent on each road, what machines they used. It's in there, it's in a holder, a binder, to break that down and say, you know, we spent twelve hours on Witch Cat Road grading this year, or that would require an auditor of road work. If that's a position you would like to volunteer for, we would...
Well, if people wanna care, I mean...
It's, it's all there, it's written out, it's just, I mean, to, to put that into the book would, would be another nightmare, I mean, to get the finances...
That's what managers are asked to do all of us.
Yeah, they, they do it, they make...
Please don't banter back and forth, right? So just kinda come with one answer and hold, there's other people with questions, yeah? You were timing your hand up?
Yeah, also, each Select Board meeting, the road max here to get a road report of what they're doing, how things are going, those are all in the minutes if you want, and those are all available online so you can keep track of what they're up to and what's broken.
If I may, I think Bill's point is people can't attend all those meetings and he's just looking for an overall report.
Now they have some...
Cheryl DeRue, I think what he's asking for is, like, on page thirty-four, there's an account that's just several paragraphs from the HF Brigham Library. There's also an account... There's also an account from the front apartment, from the top of five. It's just like several paragraphs of what's been accomplished this year, instead of like a monetary admise breakdown. And I get that they do this every week, and they have a huge binder, but if it could just be, well, in addition, like, for this meeting, you know, like, several paragraphs of like, hey, we've accomplished this this year.
Understood.
That's it.
Kathy, you had your hand up.
I would bring that up in the select board. Could we put in their report?
At the end of your summary report, you mean?
Since Mac reports to the select board? Right? Does that help you, Bill?
Yes, thanks very much. I appreciate the conversation.
Any other comments, questions, responses?
Mark Duramas? I think that, let's say, the library may do one thing, or the cemetery commission. I don't know whether you've ever watched the road commission, but they're out every day. They're out today, plowing the roads. You can't really say, okay, we want... How many days did you plow roads? Well, or how many hours? It's just inconceivable. They're out every day. So it's kind of hard to pin them down.
Kathy?
I don't think that's what he's asking for. It's just a general summary. Again, like I said, Mac reports as the road commissioner to the select board. They can include it in their report. The select board's reporting, right?
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, not having any, we're going to move to the vote. Shall the town appropriate $400,000 for road work? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article Eight carries. Article Nine. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund, which is used to match grants? Do I have this motion for move?
Call a lawyer, so move.
Second?
Sarah Jamar Hudson.
Thank you. Motion has been made to move and second it for Article Nine. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund? Are there any questions, comments? It's open for discussion.
Dennis Stewart, where are we at with funds for that right now? How far out are we with David?
We just did a paving project last year. We did it from the intersection, not the intersection, from the town line on the Boston Bowl Road with Innesburg, back. Two sides, so about one and a half section last year, just October. We waited for him to get done hauling feed and minor, so that it wouldn't push the pavement for granted.
Yes, sir?
The way the grants are set up, we're eligible for a matching paving fund grant approximately every three years. So by the time we've built up $30,000, we've got enough to do a decent stretch of road. So if that helps, I hope so.
Not that it's needed, but your name is?
Lance Lawyer.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, discussions, items? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. For Article Nine, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those against, say nay or no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article Nine carries. Article Ten. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a bridge repair fund? Do I have a motion to move?
I'm a lawyer, so move.
Do I have a second? The motion has been made to move and second. Article Ten. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a bridge repair fund? Open for discussion? Yes, sir?
Clean podcast. What bridges are we looking to fix?
Browns Pond Bridge is... It's a waste. Right now, it suits our needs and purposes, but if we stop putting money into this, we won't have enough to rebuild it. The Gulf Path Bridge, when all is said and done, we're looking at almost $600,000. So bridges aren't cheap. There are grants available, but they're managed. So we're expected to put in our share. And we're gonna get... The pecker's gonna come following one of these days, and we're gonna have to replace. We've got a few bridges. Witch Cat Road is... Browns Bridge definitely coming closer to being due.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Paul?
Is however involved with this kind of course just three.
Thank you.
Just three.
Any other questions?
Cheryl DeRue, I'm curious as to how much of the funding you want towards the Gulf Path Bridge and how much the town paid for it.
We used the bridge fund to initially pay out part of what we owed on the bridge. We had batteries. We did reimburse our bridge fund from monies that had been paid by FEMA. So we used it as a bank. It was a bridge. We had bridge money.
Before I go further, by the way, you guys are mic'd up if you just push the power button, so some people can hear.
Do you have any problem hearing me?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? Yes, sir.
Kenny Carter, I saw that the bridge account loaned $20,000 to the road work. Did that get paid back, or how does that get back into the bridge account?
That was the money I was just talking about.
From FEMA?
Yes.
It's gone back in there now?
Yes. The bridge account has been reimbursed.
Not the $20,000 yet.
Not yet. I'm sorry. Not all of it.
It will be?
Yes.
Any other questions or concern on Article Ten? Seeing how there's no more comments, just making sure, we'll move to the vote. Article Ten, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a bridge repair fund? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And against, no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article Ten carries. Article Eleven. Shall the town appropriate $297,950 to defray the general expenses of the town? Do I have a motion to move? Do I have a second? Thank you. The article has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $297,950 to defray the general expenses of the town? It's open for discussion? Bill?
Bill Irwin, I'd just like to thank the folks who put this together. It's a very thorough accounting of the expenditures, the income, and it's useful for us to be able to come here and be informed.
Excellent. Any other? You can clap. Any other discussion? Seeing how I see none, we'll move forward. Did you have your hand up, Tammy? Oh, sorry. We'll move forward to the vote for Article Eleven. Shall the town appropriate $297,950 to defray the general expenses of the town? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article Eleven carries. Article Twelve. Shall the town appropriate $5,000 for an outside audit for the year ending 2028? Do I have a motion to move?
So move.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Motion's been... The article has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $5,000 for an outside audit for the year ending 2028? Open for discussion? Yes?
Hi, Carrie Fleecker. It just... It seems like it's gone down from last year, which is a great thing. I just was wondering.
Reason it went down is because last year, we were getting money for an audit for this year. What we're doing now is we're building an account, just like the bridge account, so that when it comes time for our next audit, we don't have to ask for a large lump sum. We've spaced it out over five, six years, and made it easier this way.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Bill?
Maybe you could explain why it's 2028 and not another year, given last year's says it was for 2022?
It's a five-year rotation.
Okay, so...
Any other discussion? Seeing how I see no other discussion items, we'll move to the vote. For Article Twelve, shall the town appropriate $5,000 for an outside audit for the year ending 2028? For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article Twelve carries. Article Thirteen. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the equipment fund? Do I have a motion to move? Thank you, second. Thank you, sir. And your name is?
I'm a lawyer.
Thank you. The Article Thirteen has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the equipment fund? We're open for discussion? Yes, sir?
Paul Stanley, could we have an update on how the radar purchase worked into this fund? Or if it did, or if it didn't?
So the way that worked in is we had a excess through the budgeting last year. When we were building the budget, we did forget. My, I guess I forgot my inexperience of knowing what kind of funds we get from the state. State, we get approximately $90,000. And when we were building the budget, I didn't know that. So we had a state paid money of about $90,000, which was helpful and used to cover the cost of the bridge. With the extra coming from the equipment fund. Yeah, sorry.
Yes?
You are there. I understand that we have some carpool money, and that it went toward some piece of equipment or other. Could someone please address that?
The only carpool money that has been spent to date is the carpool money that has been used to record and broadcast young meetings. I believe totaling approximately six grand.
Probably close to eight, I believe. Seven or eight, because we bought a laptop.
Right.
Laptop.
Yeah, so computer, microphones, distribution box, a sound box, cameras. That's the only money that has been spent. Page 24. As there been thought of using some of that money to purchase equipment, so that it's not taxpayer burden, absolutely. And if you're interested, we try to discuss it at the meetings regularly.
Any other discussion for Article Thirteen? Seeing how I see none, we'll move to the vote. For Article Thirteen, shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the equipment fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article Thirteen carries. Article Fourteen. Shall the town appropriate $26,050 for the equipment repairs? Do I have a motion to move? Thank you, second. Thank you. Article Fourteen has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $26,050 for the equipment repairs? It's open for discussion? Questions, concerns? Having... Nope, yes.
Kenny Carter, can you just hear how much of that was used last year for repairs?
$26,050. What we're trying... What we're doing is, we want to maintain a budgeted amount of $35,000 in that account for repairs, so whatever's spent throughout the year is all we're gonna ask for. So if next year, with newer equipment, we spend $5,000, that money that will be $5,000.
Any other further discussion? Here?
You are a lawyer. There's an accounting of what they spent on Page 23.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Just a point of information. On the previous page, Page Seven, Article Fourteen says that you spent... That we appropriated $25,600, not $26,000.
Yes, Josh.
That was because we had $9,400 left in the account.
That was for 2022, correct? The amount that she's...
Correct. So we were, again, just bringing that number up too.
Any other further discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote for Article Fourteen. Shall the town appropriate $26,050 for equipment repairs? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. Again, the ayes appear to have it. They do. Article Fourteen carries. Article Fifteen. Shall the town appropriate $44,355 for the HF Brigham Library for 2023? Do I have a motion to move?
I remember to that.
I'm sorry, you want to ask me what's...
That should be 2024 and not 2023.
We need to first move it, and then we can amend.
So move.
Second. Brian Steele.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded.
So that should actually read for 2024, because the library votes on its budget for the next year.
So, not a problem. Can you just state your name?
Cheryl DeRue.
Thank you. There's been a request to amend Article Fifteen. Shall the town appropriate $44,355 for the HF Brigham Library?
I'll second that amendment.
Thank you, for 2024. So this requires, I believe, two-thirds vote for the amendment to carry. To do this easiest, we'll have them stand. All those in favor of amending the Article Fifteen, please stand. That's perfect. Okay, thank you. If you can all sit. And all those against, please stand. Seeing how I don't believe anyone in the back is standing for the against. It's like it's unanimous. So we shall amend Article Fifteen to read, "Shall the town appropriate $44,355 for the HF Brigham Library for 2024?" Is there any discussion? Please?
Joy, we have a very large amount of money carried over from 2021. I assume that's because of COVID, nobody was there. Could we take, say, 571807 of that and put it... And reduce this article by that, and then vote $5,000 to the library equipment fund?
Nikki Krib, so I'm on a bunch of trustees. So we actually, in Article Seventeen, have a use for that money. We have a funding issue that needs replacing. We were hoping to get off time, but now we have this carry of the money, enjoy the light it was, from 2021, because the library wasn't open that much. So we would rather not do that, because we do need to replace it for...
Any other discussion? Joy, are you making a request to amend?
I'm not. I was asking for a review.
Thank you. Yes?
I just want to be clear that we did not know until we had a recent audit. Wendy Cobb, I'm on the board of the library. We did not know about these actual ones that we are going to use. I mean, maybe Josh would like to discuss, but we did not know about the... I mean, maybe Josh would like to discuss it, but we did not know about these funds until January of this year that we had this extra money kicking around. So I think that that should really kind of be addressed, that we were unaware, there were a lot of issues with that, so.
Hi, everybody. Ewan Bear, and most of you know that I'm really pro-library, and I hope you will support the library's budget as they've seen it. There's already been some improvements in services and the organization, and I just think it's terrific, and we wouldn't be the same town we are without a library.
Any further discussion regarding Article 15? Now we'll move to the vote. For Article 15, shall the town appro, as amended, shall the town appropriate $44,355 for the HF Brigham Library for 2024? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say no.
No.
Thank you. The ayes appear to have it. Article 15 carries. Article 16, shall the town authorize surplus funds in the amount of $1,297.02 from the Brigham Free Library, HF Brigham Free Library 2022 Operating Fund to be transferred to the library's Improvement Fund? Do I have a motion?
Go move. You want to hear?
Thank you, a second.
Second, Dan Barclay.
Thank you all for seconding. The Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town authorize surplus funds in the amount of $1,297.02 from the Brigham, HF Brigham Free Library 2022 Operating Fund to be transferred to the library's Improvement Fund? Is open for discussion? Comments, concerns, questions? Yes?
Brenda Westham, so how did, granted this goes on the 21, the next article as well, but how do these funds come to life?
Yes, Nikki?
Nikki Criv, so we historically have had $1,000 to $2,000 every year that's surplus funds that we put into the Improvement Fund, which was set up, I think, around 2008, and that really was assuming that at some point our furnace is going to die. So that's just been a fund that we've gradually been adding to over the years. That other piece, the $10,000 that Wendy alluded to that was.
Just stay within Article 16 if you could.
So that's my, I should just wait.
That's okay. Any other items for discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. For Article 16, shall the town authorize surplus funds in the amount of $1,297.02 from HF Brigham's Free Libraries 2022 Operating Fund to be transferred to the library's Improvement Fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay or no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. 16, Article 16 carries. Article 17, shall the town authorize surplus funds in the amount of $10,718.07 from the HF Brigham Free Library, Free Public Libraries 2021 Operations Fund to be transferred to the library's Improvement Fund? Do I have a motion to move?
Go move. You want to hear?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town authorize surplus funds in the amount of $10,718.07 from HF Brigham Free Libraries 2021 Operating Fund to be transferred to the library's Improvement Fund? We are open for discussion?
Brenda Westham, same question. I mean, I don't have a problem with it going to Improvement Fund, I'm just curious, it was 21, so how is it undiscovered?
Go ahead. We'll let you finish.
So we had, this time last year, we didn't know we had that extra money. It was, it was after the audit was done, it showed up. And I know that's not a very good answer, and maybe the selectmen could help me with this, but we had some issues with the treasurer at the time where we weren't getting reports as we wanted them. So we just did not know this money was there. And we assume, we don't know, but we're assuming it's because we were closed for much of that year with COVID, so we saved a lot of money on salaries. The year prior, in 2020, we had a surplus of $15,000, and that we gave back to the town in 2021. So I think it was the same sort of issue.
Any more discussion, comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. For Article 17, shall the town authorize surplus funds in the amount of $10,718.07 from the HF Brigham Free Public Libraries 2021 Operating Fund to be transferred to the library's Improvement Fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 17 carries. Article 18, shall the town appropriate $15,000 for the Maple Grove Cemetery? Do I have a motion to move?
Second.
Thank you, a second.
Jeff Mason.
Thank you. Article 18 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 for the Maple Grove Cemetery? Open for discussion? Yes?
If someone would address the need, Linda McCall, on the Cemetery Commission, on page 30, you will see that last year you voted $10,000, and you spent $13,903. Some of that came from the trust interest. And this year, when we asked the county forester, Nancy Patch, about possible bug infestation of the maples, she said, you folks up there have a lot of maples that need to be addressed. And we got an estimate for removing and tending to those maple trees, and we got an estimate of $5,600. And our mowing cost this next year, the basic, is $9,660. This may come with a gas cost increase. So add that to $5,600, and then we pay our portion of the 45, that's on the edge of the Conservation Mid East Park, and that's $125. Last year, water for the park and cemetery is $160. And then we're seeing that the state law requires that the cemetery be fenced, so you'll see another $33,000, or 33,000 plus, 30,000, excuse me. We're going to be needing to use some of that to put the fence on the backside of cemetery, and also the Hearst House, which houses equipment and materials for the Cemetery Commission to use in maintaining the cemetery and the park. That'll be needing repairs. The sills are rotted, floor joists are rotted. Under miscellaneous, that figure there was to put a hasp and padlock on the back door. We got a padlock on the front door that was donated, and that's to keep kids out of there. They went in and trashed the place, and we don't want them to get hurt. And we did have eight volunteers that stepped up and helped with the flower gardens in the common, and helped with putting flowers in the urns. Willie Maynard donated two loads of crushed stone that was used in the driveway at the lower level. You look at the cost of crushed stone, that was for two additional loads, so you can see the value of Willie's donation. Very much appreciated. Please pass that on to him, Stacy. And that $15,000 that we're asking for is just a basic operating request.
Thank you. Yes?
Ewan Bear, I might stand up for this one. I wouldn't want you to think I'm planning to lose this. But I hope everybody remembers that because we pay taxes, you go to the cemetery, every resident of Bakersfield gets a plaque in the cemetery, and plus a plaque for members of their, up to five members of the family, is what I understand. And I'm one around being there, but not anytime soon. So just take that into consideration as you look at this project.
Any other items for discussion regarding Article 18? Yes, Bill?
I'd just like to thank the Cemetery Commission for what they do to keep that center of town as really beautiful and special as it should be. Absolutely.
Yes?
I'd just like to, Alice Foot, I'd just like to say, as a member of the Historical Society for many years, that we have a lot of guests come to our building, inquiring about the cemetery, and wanting to renew their memories of this area. And it is foremost in our town. We drive in and there it is, and we must make it presentable and usable in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. For Article 18, shall the town appropriate $15,000 for the Maple Grove Cemetery? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 18 carries. Article 19, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the Bakersfield Historical Society? Do I have a motion?
Why is that doubled? What's it use?
Well, we first have to move it. One second.
I'll move it. I'll move it, Amy.
Okay, move, second.
Yep. I'll move and second.
Everybody, okay, yes. Open for discussion, if we can go, now go ahead and ask you a question.
I just wondered why it was 5,000 year before, and then what's 10,000? That's a big.
Linda?
And what's it use? For the Historical Society. And the reason that has doubled is because for the first time in the last 25 years, the Historical Society had to get a loan to pay for the repairs on that back addition. And this all happened during COVID. And COVID handicapped us in getting structural engineers in to look at that in a manner that would fit into a grant request. We had grant requests that went in without structural engineers report, and it handicapped us. We did not get that money. At the end, we got $10,000 in a grant because, thanks to Preservation Trust of Vermont, they notified 1772 of the problem that we're having because of COVID, in getting, you know, the structural engineers report. When it came down, we ended up with two structural engineers, so we had two structural engineers reports to submit for that $10,000 grant. And we did get it. We had put a request in for ARPA funds, it's been on the table since last April. If we can get ARPA funds to help us, that extra $5,000 will go away. Okay? But until we get that, we're asking taxpayers to help us, because our annual payment on that loan is $4,917. And we were able to pay last year's payment, next year's payment to do July 1st. So that's where the extra is coming in. The Historical Society is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we do own the building, so we're responsible for maintaining it. But it's there for public use. We do it for the town of Bakersfield. We're all volunteers, nobody receives a salary, and we'd like you to come over for lunch. If you can't come and sit down and eat, you know, there's takeout available, but, and we're doing it by donation, so.
So is this for the repairs that you've done?
This is for the repairs on that back, because I don't know if you got out there that.
You know, if we have to add repairs at home, we don't have it done till we have the money.
Well, we couldn't afford to let it go because it would have been a safety hazard for the kids to go out there to go sliding, and for the 4th of July celebration. The year before, we got the chimney repaired before the 4th of July celebration, so that bricks wouldn't fall on kids and people that were out here. And we did that within our budget.
Further discussion?
It's kind of been a tradition that we have a treasurer's report when we give larger amounts of money to things, and I would request that we have a treasurer's report for the Historical Society going forward, so that we know what we're spending money.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to the vote. For Article 19, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the Bakersfield Historical Society? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 19 carries. Article 20, shall the town authorize the sum of $500 to be paid to the Bakersfield Conservation Commission for expenses like pollinator plants, trail signs, association memberships, kiosk repairs, fencing, et cetera? Do I have a motion to move?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Article 20 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town authorize the sum of $500 to be paid to the Bakersfield Conservation Commission for expenses such as pollinator plants, trail signs, association membership, kiosk repair, fencing, and et cetera? Open for discussion? Yes, sir?
Let's do it. When this was brought to us, when this first was created, we were told that this was going to be all grants.
It's going to be what, I'm sorry?
Grant money that was going to be used to do this, and now they're asking for money again. What happened to the grant?
Is someone here from the commission?
You got it. Larry Krieger, I'll speak to that. The park was established in January 21, 2011. We've been running on grant money all along, and it's starting to catch up to us, because one, this money will go to do a couple of things that you just saw on menu, but when you go to apply for grants, when you have the town's support behind you, it makes it a lot easier for us to apply for those grants. And you're right, we've been, we've been on this, park's been paid for, paid for it last year, it's 100% town of Bakersfield, four acres. But moving forward, we're chipping away at what money, but if you look on page 20, you'll see, you're right, we still have a couple grand left, but we're chipping away at that every year, and we're trying to maintain more trails, more signs.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm also a member of that Conservation Commission, and we operate under the honor of these five people that control our town. And whatever projects we choose to do, what we want to do, we have to get their approval. And that's why I'm here.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Alice Foot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion, comments, concerns? Yes?
Ewan Bear, 500 bucks is peanuts. It's probably even hard to parcel out in the, you know, how much, what share it was pays. So, you know, I'm not sure why we spend so much time on about 500 dollars.
Understand? So your hand up in the back?
I just want to say we're really thankful, because we moved here about a year ago, and the Shattuck Mountain Trail has been fantastic, an active go-to trail for when people come visit. So I think it's very important to keep supporting you guys in what you're doing, and we're thankful for it.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Okay, so we'll move to the vote. For Article 20, shall the town authorize the sum of $500 to be paid to the Bakersfield Conservation Committee for expenses such as pollinator plants, trail signs, association membership, kiosk repair, fencing, et cetera? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, please say no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 20 carries. Article 21, shall the vote. Shall the voters of the town of Bakersfield authorize the select board to establish a reserve fund for a townwide reappraisal in accordance with 25 VSA 2804? Look for, entertain a motion to move? Thank you, sir. Second?
Melanie Riddle, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made to move and second it for Article 21. Shall the voters of the town of Bakersfield authorize the select board to establish a reserve fund for a townwide reappraisal in accordance with 25 VSA 2804? Got it? Open for discussion?
You and Bear, so there's no amount in here and there's no real structure. So are we, you know, are we giving you a blank track group or what?
Josh?
There is an amount. If you look, and I know I'm getting out of order, moderator, but to answer the question that's appropriate. Item 21 tailors ties to 22 and also 23. Reason being, this is how the state says that you have to warrant it. It has to be three separate items. We're asking for three separate things. And basically, we are at, what are we at? 81.84?
Yeah, we're almost to. We're close to 80.
Yeah. In order, in order for the state to give you the, we have to be above 80% appraisal rate. Right now, we're like, I think the last number I saw was like 81.5. So this has to happen. We, it happened down in Burlington two years ago and they were not happy. Because it was right as all the property values went through the room. So we kind of pushed it off, hoping that maybe stuff would come back to normalcy. And it really hasn't. So I think this is our new normal now, sadly. So we've kind of been right on the cusp of it happening to happen. And at this time, the state has basically said, it needs to happen. We've started, we've reached out to people from the state to start getting firms to give us quotes. But when we discuss this on our, if you want to ask it again, we can talk about the actual money part. But this is, this ties to 22 and 23.
Thank you. Lance?
Just to, Lance Lawyer, as an aside, just because we reappraised the town doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes are going to go up. We need X amount of dollars to meet our budgetary needs. If your property value goes up, our tax rates will go down. I know it's a hard ship that we all have to go through. I could go through it myself, along with you. But bear with us. It is not our choice to do this. We're putting it off as long as we can as jobs to hope that property values will go back down where they belong. Maybe wishful thinking. But we're required to do this. Bear with us, please.
Thank you.
Mark Turris? The problem is that in the last few years, people have come and bought houses. And a house that would sell for $200,000 is now being sold for 400,000 or 500,000. And so the level, the comparison is totally screwed. And everybody else in the state is having the same problem and probably in the rest of the country. So to even things out, we have to have a reappraisal so that everybody's house has been appraised at 2023 values and not some people have a 2000 or 1990 value and other people have a 223 value. So it's an appraisal to keep things level for everybody. Need a level field. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
The other thing we should keep behind is that our school tax, which is a major part of our property tax, hinges on the value of our properties. So to kind of go with Lance's point, we need to keep in mind that this school tax is very critical to have those values pretty much equivalent to reality.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote for Article 21. Shall the voters of the town of Bakersfield authorize the select board to establish a reserve fund for a townwide reappraisal in accordance with 25 VSA 2804? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it. And they do. Article 21 carries. Moving on to Article 22. Shall the town authorize remaining funds to be transferred from the grant list fund to the reappraisal fund? I'll entertain a motion to move?
I'll move it. I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Article 22 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town authorize remaining funds to be transferred from the grant list fund to the reappraisal fund? Yes, sir?
If we transfer all the money out of the grant list fund into the reappraisal fund, where do we pay lister salaries and the other expenses of maintaining the grant list? And where does the state fund for maintenance of grant lists go when we receive them?
I guess I'm answering that. You're a lawyer.
Vera?
See, now we got. Yeah, the grant, the money that the state sends goes in this grant list. Sorry, I'm not supposed to. The money does go in the grant list fund. And my question was going to be before Joy asked, the question was, if we move that $15,000 that we have over into the reappraisal fund, there's not going to be money there to pay our listers and their expenses? So I was, yeah, I was wondering what you meant by that. Because last year, state fund, the money we received was going to be $100. And we paid 10,000 out, so is it going to be the negative at the end of the year? It was my, my thinking.
Okay. Do you mind? Go ahead, Josh.
The listers have requested that that number not be the full amount, that it be 14,000. So that it leaves them operating money. That's their number they came up with. That's not.
So you're saying the grant listers has an amount that they want it to, to hold on to or move?
Move.
Wait, one moment, Tommy. But in the body of the article, it doesn't mention the amount.
That's right. I was going to amend it, but you skipped me.
She had to read up first.
Motion to amend Article 22.
A motion to amend Article 22 to read.
Shall the town authorize the sum of $14,000 to be transferred from the grant list to the reappraisal fund?
I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
You don't have one second.
All right. Yes. We have a motion to amend and second, just one moment, please. For amendment, I believe that requires again, two-thirds? No, just majority. So for all, for all those in favor to amend Article 22 to read, shall the town authorize the sum of?
No, can we discuss it before we go?
It needs to be discussed.
Well, okay. I apologize. So I, first I have to see if the amendment carries. I'm not, I'm not put it to vote?
No.
Okay.
You discussed it before you experienced.
Go ahead. Go ahead, then.
It can't be enough unless you know you're getting a lot more in state fund. Because if you take that 6887 that you got last year and you add to it the $1,300, $13,42 that you're going to get for left in there after you transferred, you end up with about $8,000, but you spent 10,000. So I, I don't.
That was just the number I was given. I don't, I'm not, I mean, if we would like amend it to 10,000, that way we're safe?
I think you have to withdraw it.
I can withdraw it.
Tammy's never going to answer your question. Go ahead.
So the way it's supposed to be, the money that we get from the state is supposed to go in a fund to save for the reappraisal, the next needs reappraisal. We in Bakersfield use that to pay our listers. So we don't have any reappraisal fund, which is why we're in this spot. But most towns, that's the purpose of who we from the state, is to put it towards our next reappraisal. We use it to pay.
Go ahead, Josh. You want to, you got it?
Can I amend my amendment?
We could withdraw.
So you're going to have to withdraw your amendment and restate it because it wasn't approved as an amendment.
I would like to withdraw my amendment.
Is there a second to withdraw Josh's amendment?
Brian!
Go ahead. Go ahead, Josh.
I would like to amend this.
Yes, to read?
Read. Shall the town authorize the sum of $10,000 to be transferred from the grant list fund to the reappraisal fund?
Do I have a second? Seconded. So we have Article 22 as being amended. If approved, shall the town authorize?
Joy.
Oh, actually, Joy.
Shall the town authorize in the sum of $10,000 to be transferred from the grant list fund to the reappraisal fund? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. The amendment carries. So Article 22. Shall the town authorize in the sum of $10,000 to be transferred from the grant list fund to the reappraisal fund? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote for Article 20. Oops, did I miss someone? Oh, I apologize.
Point of Lance Lawyer, point of information. We've been told by the state that there's no way that this is happening this year. Probably not next year. And if the year after. So we're not, we're not asking for all the money we need right up front.
Lance, I already know the answer, but can you kind of explain why it's possibly three years out?
Because every town in the state's going through the same process. And all the appraisers are busy.
We're already tied up. So any further discussion, comments, concerns? Yes, sir?
Tom Berry, I was wondering what the timeline would be on this, then? Five years? No firm answers. I can, I can throw out a guess based on information that has been shared with us. Any, anything I say is a, excuse the expression, it's a wild ass guess. It's a lot better than something.
Any further discussion on Article 22? Yes, Joy?
Just a request that we get in there just as soon as we can because it's going to get more expensive every year.
Any further, further discussion on Article 22 as amended? Seeing there's no further discussion, we'll move to the vote for Article 22 as amended. Shall the town authorize the sum of $10,000 to be transferred from the grant list fund to the reappraisal fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. Article 22 appears to have passed. And it has. Article 23. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 to the reappraisal fund? I'm open for a motion?
Make that motion, Vera Lynn.
Thank you, Vera. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. And your name for the record? Thank you, Mark. So the Article 23 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 to the reappraisal fund? We're open for discussion. Any questions, concerns?
Melanie Riddle. You said this was a few years out. Is there an estimate on the cost at this time?
Josh? Yeah, the estimate right now is $70,000.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote for Article 23. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 to the reappraisal fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it. And they do. For Article 23. Article 24. Shall the town authorize $5,000 for fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? I'm seeking motion to move?
I'll second, Mr. Robert Lewis. Brian Steele, second.
No, you actually were.
I'll find, yeah.
Here's a second. Thank you. So we're getting ahead of ourselves, but okay. Article 24 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town authorize $5,000 for fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? We're open for discussion. Yes, sir?
Just wondering, like, are we in the planning stages for it or what is going on? When you look at the town website, it still has last year's information, so.
Yes, Kathy?
The town doesn't do it. It's the fire department. I think it's fire. Right?
The fire department comes in and works for safety on that night. As far as the organizing, it's pretty much the select board and community members that stepped forward to help with the planning process. It's not all on the fire department's responsibility. The other thing that we want to throw in here, we've been in touch with the select board to start the planning piece. This is going to decide whether this lands on the website or not. Larry Krieger is a big hinge on this. There is an increase in costs. The fireworks have gone up dramatically. Those guys covered a lot of those expenses last year in that increase. We can't expect them to do that year to year. We need more portalets for that evening. That's driving that cost up. The other thing to leave you people with, it's been a lot of static on a parade. If anybody wants to step forward and organize and get the permits for that parade to run it down Main Street, the fire department has said that we will provide traffic control for that event. But somebody else is going to step forward and do the organizing of that parade. And believe me, they better be ready for a lot of work.
On a point of personal note, Paul, I believe that they could utilize the prior, prior documentation to help them fill out if there wasn't the appropriate issue.
Yes, correct.
We have that on file.
Can I ask whoever those community members are that organized this, if they want it on the town website, I need to get something to put on the town website?
I think that, I think to Paul's point, we need someone to volunteer to make a committee, which isn't for this section of the meeting. It could be in the, in 27. Yes. Either come to a meeting or we can discuss it further in section 27, other business. So back to Article 24. Is there any further discussion about the fireworks? Yes?
Rachel, I have to have a question. It says $5,000 for fireworks for the annual fourth celebration needs. Can that money only be spent on fireworks or if other expenses arise, can that money be spent on?
Lance? Lance Lawyer. It says, "N needs," celebration needs, which includes portalets and other various expenses.
It says for fireworks for the 4th of July celebration.
Celebration needs for fireworks.
You have to close. Make the amendment.
Yes, Joy?
I would amend to say that we'll, shall the town authorize $500,000? No. And you thought I didn't want to spend money. Shall the town authorize $5,000 for fireworks and other celebration needs for the 4th of July?
How about, as suggestions? How about... as suggestions, Lancelier? Just strike the word fireworks.
Okay, for the Fourth of July celebration. I'm happy.
There's an amendment out. Does anyone second the amendment?
I'll second. You and there.
It's open for discussion. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion, we'll put the amendment to vote for Article 24 to read, shall the town authorize $5,000 for the annual fourth celebration needs? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no.
No.
Thank you. The amendment carries. So discussion, any further discussion on Article 24? Shall the town authorize $5,000 for the annual fourth celebration needs as amended? No? Then we shall move to the vote. On Article 24, one more time, the amended articles from now read, shall the town authorize $5,000 for the annual fourth celebration needs? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 24 shall carry. We have already discussed and moved Article 25. We're going to go past that since we moved it up earlier in the agenda. Article 26, shall the town appropriate the following sum of money?
Well, we didn't vote on it.
We did not vote on Article 25 even though we moved it earlier.
It's Australian ballot. It's Australian ballot to read the Article 25.
Okay, but, but in order to do that, we still have to pass this article by Australian ballot, not as the article says.
Well, we also didn't pass Article 2. This is, this is...
The last line of the first paragraph. It says that it's going to be covered. Sorry.
Go ahead.
The last line of the first paragraph on the opening there says that Article 2 and 25 are voted Australian ballot.
And it was sworn in.
It's not a, it's not a point of action from the floor today.
But it's not included in Article 2. That's where it should be.
I don't disagree with that.
That's why I believe we moved Article 25 up right behind 2.
Correct. It's not voted from the floor.
It's not voted from the floor. It was announced that it would be Australian ballot.
I think there's an error here.
I'm more than happy to take a moment, and let's address the error first, Bill, unless you want to second her, Erin?
No, no, I just wanted to say that it sounds like if you are for or against 25, you do it in the room there when you put up the ballot.
Correct.
So just make sure you recognize that.
To appeal the moderator's decision under what you're stating is an error, would it require you to make a motion?
I know that we challenge the ruling because the article itself says therefore voting. Shall the town of Bakersfield adopt all but articles by Australian ballot? And, and we haven't voted to do that. So we reviewed it and we discussed it with Article 2, but we didn't vote on it.
Okay, I understand your concern. This requires a second from someone. Will someone second the appeal of my decision? Anyone?
On the former moderator or not?
The appeal has been... Thank you, Tammy. Tammy has seconded the appeal. This requires a majority vote. So to appeal the moderator's decision, for all those in favor repealing my decision, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no.
No.
I believe the noes carry. The appeal has been, the error slash appeal has been denied. Moving on to Article 26. Shall the town appropriate the following sums of money and its multiple items? So we'll start with A. I'm not sure, Joy, you originally had your hand up for this, okay? So shall we appropriate $2,776 for this Franklin County Home Health? Do I have a motion to move? Do we have a second? The motion for Article 26A has been moved and seconded to donate $2,776 for the Franklin County Home Health. It's open for discussion. Any discussion regarding Article A, Article 26A? Yes, sir?
Yeah, just a point of order. I believe that this is one article to be voted on for A through N in its entire. I think we actually voted to do that in town meetings a couple of years ago, but I just wanted to clarify that.
The way I understand it is they're individual, but there's not a discussion. These are requests. They're either approved or denied. That's the way it's been by the way.
Just a personal point. In prior videos, people have debated amounts, and they've changed amounts, one. Two, in prior videos, I've gone off mainly your videos, in prior videos that I watched, Bill, someone makes a motion to wrap this all up into one vote. So if you want to make a motion to do that, this is the time, otherwise we're going to continue with 26A. Yes?
I remember a private, like, select board meeting here when we were talking about this.
Yes.
That, that there was a question of should it be listed individually, and the people I attended that said yes.
Yes, but from the floor, in prior, prior meeting days, there has been a request to put them all in one envelope and make it in one decision.
I would say I think so.
Thank you. Yes?
Just for, just testing the waters here, I would move to have all of them voted on at once, and people can look at the individual items there and see if there's something they would like to have discussed or something, but not to have a motion and vote for all of them, just so you know, that'll take quite a while.
Well, I have, Joy first.
Do we not have a motion on the floor?
We are motion to move and second, and I was hoping it for discussion. But, you know, it is open for discussion. If someone wants to make a motion for the rest of 26, they can. But we are in an informational stage here, right? Where folks are trying to figure something out.
For 26A.
26A is where we're in discussion. Yes?
I think in the past, we just read 26, made a motion, seconded it, and then just said A was this much, yes or no? B is this much, yes or no? No more motions and seconds, right, Ewen? Isn't that where we get it?
I don't remember.
Maybe there was three years ago.
In the meetings I watched, someone made a motion to compress all this into one, as 26, except or reject. There was some discussion where people wanted to remove some things within there, but it was principally done in one moment. Joy?
This is no different than Article 4.
Right, which we took one by one. It took one by one. So any further discussion on 26A? Okay, so closing discussion for Article 26A reads to, shall the town appropriate $2,776 for the Franklin County Home Health? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, nay? No? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. It carries. Article 26B, shall the town appropriate $1,527.60 for Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District?
So move. You and there.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $1,527.60 for Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District? It's open for any discussion? Comments?
Mark Doranis, I am the Bakersfield representative for the Northwest Solid Waste District. And this is a yearly budget for operating budgets. And also to ask more, we're expanding the facilities down in Georgia to accept more because the building that is there was built in 2012, and since then, the amount of recycled materials has gone up many times. And so they don't have room down there, and they want to expand. And so this is just an approval. It doesn't have any effect on money for the town of Bakersfield. It's just an approval for us to get some grants. And so we would like to have you to say yes, because recycling is one of these... What?
I want to know how many of you would gather.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that.
I was letting you go on with the solid waste discussion.
Okay, the solid waste district is something that has been very instrumental in keeping trash off the side of the roads and keeping things at least clean. We have compost that is also used for everybody. You can just bring your compost from the kitchen in. We also take various agricultural plastics, bail rap, and also maple syrup tubing and stuff like that. So it's something that the entire community can use, and it's something that we hope that everybody will support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion or amendments? No? We'll move to vote. Article 26, shall the town appropriate $1,527.60 for Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26B carries. Article 26C, shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? Shall the town appropriate $200 for the Franklin County Industrial Development Court?
So move. Larry Krieger.
Do I have a second?
Second, Laura.
Thank you. The article has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $200 for the Franklin County Industrial Development Court? Open for discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to the vote for Article 26, shall the town appropriate $200 for the Franklin County Industrial Development Court? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26C carries. Article 26D, shall the town appropriate $1,477 for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission? Do I entertain a motion to move? Yes?
So move.
Lancelier, second? Lancelier, thank you. Article 26D has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $1,477 for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission? Open for discussion, Bill?
Yeah, I just want to mention that NRPC this year will be approached for a grant for the revision of our town plan, which is required every seven years, and will likely be combining that with an effort to revise the bylaws. The planning commission meets every month. Usually, it's the first Monday of the month. And we warn those on the town website, if you have items that you would like incorporated into the town plan or the bylaws, please come to the planning commission. You can do it either in person here at Town Hall on those Monday nights at 7:00, or you can do it online because those are simulcast.
Thank you.
You and there, what is the likely amount of this grant that we're going to get? And is it in excess of the amount of money we're giving them?
So the grant pays for a planner from Northwest Regional Planning Commission. It's based on hours. In the past, when we've done this, it's been on the order of $5,000 to $10,000 to do both.
I just want to know, we get to return our investment?
Are there any further discussion, amendments? No? We shall move to the vote for Article 26D, shall the town appropriate $1,477 for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26D carries. Just a point of order, before we continue, it is after 12, and normally this is the time people break for lunch, including over at our historical society. I don't know if this is a good point. Does anyone want to make a motion to move for lunch, or shall we continue? Continue? Are we sure?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Article 26E, as in echo, shall the town appropriate $600 for the Mississauga? Mississauga. God, I even listened to that on Google. River Basin Association. Do I entertain a motion to... Thank you?
Second.
Second, thank you. Article 26, shall the town appropriate $600 for the Mississauga River Basin Association? I am. Got to read this one or two more times. Open for discussion.
Paul Stanley, just a quick update here, continuing as vice president for MRBA, Mississauga River Basin Association. And number one and foremost, would like to introduce Kate Dogg right here, way here. Lives in Bakersfield and has just come on our Board of Directors. We are very, very pleased for that. And the other highlight this year, our president has stepped up hugely and invested in a building renovation in East Berkshire, the junction of 105 and the road that goes up to Montgomery. And it's a corner building right there, and it was a real estate office. He has put an incredible amount of work and money into renovating that, and that has become our head office. This is huge for us. We're doing an open house there on 319. It's a Sunday morning from 9:00 to 11:00, and we invite everyone to come up and take a look at it, and we'll have information there on what MRBA does. And I've got newsletters and donation certificates here if anybody's interested. And we're also doing a SORA, which is for our community members and leaders. That's going to be at the Opera House in Ennisburg on 323 from 4:00 to 8:00. And we hope that all of our, especially the road crews, this is a huge one for wire quality. So that's just a quick update, and we have a full report on page 47 in here if anybody's interested in more information.
Thank you, Paul. Kathy?
I just want, two questions. One question is, is it info, put your stuff that you want people to see out on that table if you haven't already?
Okay.
And secondly, is it the building beside the Jolly Store in East Berkshire, is that what you're talking about?
Any further discussion on Article 26E as in echo? Having seen none, we shall move to the vote for Article 26, shall the town appropriate $600 for the Mississauga River Basin Association? That had to be closer, right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. Excellent. Appears the ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26E as in echo carries. Article 26F, shall the town appropriate $500 for the American Red Cross?
So move. You and there.
Article 26F has been moved and seconded, Joy. Shall the town appropriate $500 for the American Red Cross? Open for discussion? Yes?
Larry Krieger, can I have somebody speak on that? I guess I view American Red Cross as being a national line, not a town line, so somebody can answer that one.
All of the, sorry, all of the write-ups, please, the requests that we get, are to be paid as 38, 48. So any, any information that we got... So any, any information that we got is on those pages, and it gives you the brief overview. And I didn't expect that our representative here would be able to speak on their behalf once or twice. But they don't have a record yet.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I, in support of the Red Cross, as an emergency responder, would like to really support the Red Cross. If we have an event where somebody loses their house to fire or anything like that, they are ready to move in and help that family. And it's a huge support to the fire service and the emergency service, not just in Bakersfield, but across the county and the city.
Any further discussion? Yes, Rosalie?
Rosalie Williams, that I would like to support the Red Cross in my house, where I lost everything. And they even help with prescription glasses. They actually helped to get you a prescription if you didn't have one, updated everything. And they're amazing, they're amazing. What you need help with, they're there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. For Article 26F, as in foxtrot, shall the town appropriate $500 for the American Red Cross? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, please signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Moving, Article 26F carries. Moving to Article 26G, shall the town appropriate $100 for Green Up Vermont?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second, Larry Fisher.
Thank you, Larry, join me. Uh, the Article 26G has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $100 for Green Up Vermont? Open for discussion, yes?
Yes, Melissa Dionne. I have been in charge of Green Up Day for the last several years. It's the first Saturday in May. I would love to have some more help if anybody would like to be part of that with me. The library is graciously letting me set up outside in front. And there's bags and refreshments, and we clean up around town. The one thing I do want to mention, and I know the select board probably has a bee in their bonnet about this, but the tires are not accepted by the solid waste district that day. And it's great because people come and they bring their trash and they leave it right in the park where they're supposed to. But there's dozens of tires that are taken and put there. And I believe that it costs more than $100 to remove those tires because the state will come and take all the green bags, but they will not take the tires. And fortunately, Mark can probably speak to this as well, they will take them at the solid waste, at a cost, is it $5?
Mark DeRivas, the rep? Um, the Northwest Solid Waste will take the tires, but they take them in a large lot. And I don't know whether the, I think last year or a couple of years ago, they loaded up a truck and they had to make an arrangement just so that they know when they were coming. But they, the town, the recycling district will take the tires. And I think it's free because they have, I think they get some money from the state. But the probably, I don't know where would be the best place to put them.
Okay, are you sure that it's free? Because in the past, the town has paid.
Not free.
That's like, they get settled on.
Not free, yeah, okay.
I think it was between $5 and $8 per tire.
Yeah.
What I remember.
All right, any further discussion?
I would like to say that if you live on a back road, whether your town is serviced by Ennisburg, Fairfield, or Bakersfield, they don't pick up the green bags. It's the state that has to be on state road.
It has to be on, Mark, 108 or 36.
Thank you, Mary. Yes?
I just, I really want to make an amendment to increase the amount of money that we spend and actually spend on Green Up Day. Or I can do that for next year. But I know that it costs more than $100 to get rid of the tires.
But this hundred goes to Green Up Vermont. It's not something we send aside and pay for the tires.
That'll happen next year.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if next year we should add that into the Green Up cost? That we pay $100 to Green Up Vermont as well as...
It would have to go into the general expense line. Because these are, these are requests that come from the entities. So Green Up Vermont is only requesting $100 from, from Bakersfield for the bags or pickup. If that's a great idea, but it would either have to be put into the road budget or the general fund, depending on how you want it.
Well, I appreciate that it happens. And I just want to acknowledge, I know that it costs the town $100 or more. And I want to make sure that that money is there so that that continues to happen.
So back to the discussion of $100 for Green Up Vermont. Is there any further discussion on Green Up Vermont donating $100? Seeing none, we're going to move to the vote. For Article 26G, shall the town appropriate $100 for Green Up Vermont? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26G passes. Article 26H, shall the town appropriate $4,000 for the Fairfield Community Center? Entertain a motion? Yes, sir?
Brian Steele, so move.
Free here. Melissa Dionne, second.
Thank you. Article 26H has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $4,000 for the Fairfield Community Center? We are open for discussion, yes, sir?
Savannah Riddle, I just want to, hope there's anyone here that can speak on why it's double for last year? Since there's not a report anywhere, trumping the hat. Just wondering if there's any more?
Well, I was waiting to see if you had an answer. Unless you have an answer. So I have an answer, yes?
I believe that the increase is because senior meals are happening again at the community center. And that hadn't happened during COVID. So I believe that money is, but it's not factual. But I know that senior meals are happening again.
Do you still have it?
Yeah, I don't know if this is part of it, but I know that they were, they have to do quite a bit of renovation. It was brought up during the ARCA meetings. They are, want to renovate their kitchen. Their kitchen area is very small. So I don't know if that may be part of the cost. But they're just trying to defray the cost by going to the towns that, you know...
Can you state your name?
Wendy Cal.
Jessica, just a few, I saw another hand. Yes, Brian?
Brian Steele. My mom apologizes for not being able to be here to answer that question directly. She's in North Carolina. We basically quickly went over it. And the previous statement stated that senior meals are happening again, and we're delivering meals out of that space. Is the reason why the request for the additional funds. Just so you guys know, this organization provides us with a lot of things. It provides senior meals. It provides a daycare center inside that space. We also do concerts on the Green, which have actually connected to that space as well. So it's really important. One-third of the participants in the senior meals come from the industry. So it's not, and, and they're requesting money from the town of Fairfield as well. So it does, it is a warranted expense, Mike.
Any further discussion?
Do we know how much Fairfield was? Like, was it double and just, like, that's a significant chunk?
So, they actually requested double last year. They requested $4,000 last year. We reached out to them. We said, as a select board, we would put the budgeted amount from the previous year, the $2,000 forward. But we were not comfortable doubling it unless they came with an explanation. They came with a presentation and a great explanation, which I do not know why it's not in this book. It should be. I don't know if I put it in the wrong folder, but... But they do have, they have to break down percentages of, I don't want to say elderly, but elderly that are going down and getting food, the percentages of meals that are being brought to Bakersfield. Meals on Wheels is also a location there.
Food shelves.
Food shelves. That was also at that location. And they had the percentage of Bakersfield residents that were there were not quite half, but dang close. Fairfield's contribution, if I remember correctly, I think was 14,000 to that building. Again, they do own the infrastructure, so I mean, but it was considerably larger than what Bakersfield...
Just, yes, sir?
Just Clint Fordman, a former board member of the community center. When I was with Rachel, I think Bakersfield was putting in about 1,500 and Fairfield was about 15,000. And I believe that the services were, you know, to Josh's point, fairly equalized. So this is kind of more analyzing as to where Fairfield can carry the big part.
If I may, to Josh's point and caveat, when they came to the meeting, to the select board, they told us that it was appropriate per the, for the people who attend, per town. So this was the third that was brought up by Brian. You know, we're paying a third of the cost. Fairfield is supposed to be paying two-thirds of the cost because they were just trying to equalize it out. Yes, Paul?
Paul Stanley, would like to dito all the conversation and add that we just had two volunteers from this community that just got up and left to work down there. So we got that one on, too.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion on Article 26H? Seeing as there is none, we'll move to the vote. For Article 26H, shall the town appropriate $4,000 for the Fairfield Community Center? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26H passes. Article 26I, as in indigo, shall the town appropriate $100 for VT Rural Fire Protection Task Force? Entertain a motion? Yes, sir?
Motion.
To move?
Brian Steele, move, yes.
Thank you, do I have a second?
All families, second.
Article 26I has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $100 for VT Rural Fire Protection Task Force? We're open for discussion, is there any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, we shall move to the vote. For Article 26I, shall the town appropriate $100 for VT Rural Fire Protection Task Force? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26I passes. Article 26J, shall the town appropriate $95 for Vermont Center for Independent Living? I would seek a motion? Yes, sir?
So moved, all in favor?
I have moved, do I have a second? Thank you, Brenda Churchill. Motion 26J has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $95 for Vermont Center for the Independent Living? It is open for discussion? Anyone have any comments? Seeing there are no comments, we shall move to the vote. For Article 26J, shall the town appropriate $95 for Vermont Center for Independent Living? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Or no, apologize. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 26J carries. Article 26K, shall the town appropriate $600 for Northwestern Counseling? I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second? I have a second with Josh Goss. For Article 26K, shall the town appropriate $600 for Northwestern Counseling? It's open for discussion. Seeing now there is none, we shall move to the vote. For Article 26K, shall the town appropriate $600 for Northwestern Counseling? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Thank you. The ayes appear to have it, they do. Article 26K carries. Article 26L, shall the town appropriate $1,000 for the Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Foundation LTD?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Article 26L, shall the town appropriate $1,000 for the Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund LTD? It's open for discussion, yes?
What happens there for the youth?
Can you state your name first?
Mary Dumber.
Thank you, Mary.
How does it pertain to the youth in the area?
Okay, do, you have an answer to that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Melody Rill. I'd like to let you know that the Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund sponsors not only the hunter safety courses that everybody is required to take before shooting any kind of equipment. They are also providing a space for the egg hunt for the children of Bakersfield, which last year they did it for the first time. It was a huge turnout. They also sponsor youth groups and summer school programs for every school in Franklin County who chooses to contact them for a space to come and use their property.
Has anybody been there to do with the summer program?
Yes. School, schoolchildren from around Franklin County have been going for the last two years.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah?
Sarah Jo Markoff. Lucas was one of my dearest childhood friends. And it's not lost on me, looking around, it's her mom, Paul, and James, and others who grew up with the Williams family. We're all well into our 40s, 13s, 14s. And her family have been at this for well over two decades of, of giving back to this community and keeping the spirit of Lucas's vision alive for this community in incredibly, incredibly selfless way. In a way that has benefited now, literally, two generations or more of not only children, but adults and elderly folks alike, with no end in sight. Rosalie is relentless in the work that she does and the wish that she gives back to this community. And I know that my family and I have been so grateful for that. We just fully support this very nominal amount of money for this article in C3.
Ms. Churchill?
Yes, Jennifer Soffe. I'm with you there at the 2019. And I just want to say, I hosted, I hosted the first egg hunt last year, and I'll be doing it again this year. Rosalie was the first one to step up also and offer a space to us to use it as a town for all the kids. And it was a huge success last year. And I expect it to just be as good this year, if not better. And I just wanted to say a huge thank you personally and for all her kindness and support that she's given me through the two years that I've been here.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes. As Sarah Willie Joe did mention that we're on our second generation of kids. Last summer, Bakersfield Elementary School, Ennisburg Elementary School, Ennisburg Middle High School, Montgomery Elementary School, Richford Elementary School, Richford Junior Senior High School, and Sheldon Elementary School. It was over almost four hundred children that participated at the field down there. We're just eight tenths of the mark. They'd spend the day with us, we'd feed them. And it just had amazing times. We had one little boy who got off the bus from Montgomery. And he come already about 10, 12 years old. And he said to me, Ms. Williams, when we got off the bus, we thought we were going to board here. He said, but this place is amazing. And he said, it's just so much fun here. And I just, it blew me away because we offer, we don't, I want to say, sorry. I don't believe in entertaining children. I want children to be able to think for themselves. We have no Wi-Fi, we don't have, you know, the internet. We do for security purposes, the cameras. But it's all provided to children. And since May of 1999, we have been providing these services free to children, all volunteer and in kind. And thank you for even considering helping us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. For Article 26L, shall the town appropriate $1,000 for the Lucas James Williams Memorial Fund LTD? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, please signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it, they do. Article 26L has been approved or adopted.
Thank you.
Article 26M, as in Mike, shall the town appropriate $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County Incorporated? Yes, sir? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. The Article 26M has been moved and seconded. Shall the town appropriate $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County Incorporated? We're open for discussion.
Wendy Cog. The Franklin, I don't think a lot of people know what the Franklin County Cat Crusaders do. And we're just giving them $500, but they're, for what they do for Franklin County, they go and if you have barn cats that need to be spayed or neutered, they come in, they trap them, they get them and they neuter, spay and neuter them and release them. If you have a stray cat that is hanging around and you need it fixed, they will come, they will take care of that for you and they will release it. So when you think about the cause, it would cost probably four cats out of our pockets if we had cats that we had to have done. That, you know, they will come and they will, you know, if you have a farm, they will come and fix all your cats for nothing. You know, and this little donation, $500 is, is just a drop in the bucket for these guys. And they're really, really great program. They raise a lot of funds, but they're having all sorts of things in Ennisburg. But I think that for what it is, people do have this outlet in Bakersfield that you may not know about, that you can get in contact with them and they will come and they will take care of stray cats that are hanging around. They're just trying to reduce the pet population.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing now there's none, we'll move to the vote for Article 26M, as in Mike. Shall the town appropriate $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County Incorporated? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it and Article 26M carries. Article 26N, as in November. Shall the town appropriate $1,000 for Laura's House of St. Albans? I entertain a motion? Do I have, Sarah, moving? Signify you? Article 26N, shall the town appropriate $1,000 for Laurel's House of St. Albans? We're open for discussion? Yes?
Nothing to do with the article at all, but we hold one of my ballots, so we have to.
I'm sorry?
Well, we've got a lot of people that left the Chincay County that we had at 1.73. It may not be accurate.
So do we need to vote on my ballot? Okay, thank you.
We got far less than half a seat.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes?
Rachel Huff, does anyone know what Laura's House is?
Laura's House?
Sarah Jo Markham, I am not affiliated and can't speak in detail, but they can provide services in particular for women who are experiencing domestic abuse. So both housing and other support services in a highly confidential, supportive way. They're connected to all of the support agencies for those women's families. It's a crucial, crucial service. And I think it was highly utilized particularly during COVID. And we know across the board, across the nation, not just here, that those instances of domestic abuse when people were home more than normal surged.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Having seen none, we'll move to the vote for Article 26N, as in November. Shall the town appropriate $1,000 for Laurel's House, Laura's House of St. Albans? I apologize. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by nay or no. The ayes appear to have it. Article 26N carries. So I come back to the question I had before we went through 26. We're now 12:35. Do we wish to break for lunch or do you want to continue? I know, but that one article sometimes lasts an hour. So I'm just checking with folks. Continue? Okay. So on to our final article of the day. I know you're all happy with that. Article 27. To do any other business that can be properly transacted at this time. To put a caveat, please note anything under this section is non-binding and cannot be about money since it was not worn. Yes, sir. We need to move it. You want to move it first? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Paul?
Just a quick little announcement here. We have a gentleman in the room who has dedicated a lot of years to the fire service. And believe me, across the state, there's a lot of people that have put many, many years in the fire service. And we get to the point, who the hell is counting? But we did take a moment and it was a really good reason to have a party this, this year. And his name is Todd Cosgrove. I don't think he needs any specific introduction, but he has dedicated his volunteer and his work life to the fire service and the emergency services.
How many years?
So 50 years. And just a quick addition, we have another gentleman just north of us named Terry Wright, who has put in 60 years in the fire service. And he's working on his third generation of offspring that are in the fire service. So you could just give a quick hand.
Thank you. Yes?
Mother, if it is appropriate, I would like to have a motion that we direct the select board to produce a letter of commendation to Mr. Cosgrove for his long service to the town.
Thank you. There's a motion made. Is there a second? Not that it really needs it, but thank you, Sarah, Brian, several of you. There is a motion been made and seconded to produce a letter of commendation for Todd Cosgrove for his 50 years of service. It's not to be voted on, but I believe the select board, Josh, Len, Brenda. No, that's true too. All those in favor of producing said letter, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please signify by saying no. I didn't think there was going to be any more. Thank you so much and thank you for the motion. Yes?
Yes, I was wondering if anyone could, I mean, give us a brief synopsis of what's going on with the Brigham Academy building?
Can first, can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Susan Treibhaus.
Thank you, Susan. Brigham Academy update?
Yes, Claire. We're working on, we have somebody who's actually interested in continuing on the project for elderly housing in the Brigham building. I'm not eligible to share a lot of information at the moment, but the party is seriously looking into continuing on the project. The party is, at this time, trying to round up funding. I don't regret, but the partners, anybody who's willing to donate.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up to that while you're standing?
I was wondering how long these negotiations have been going on.
Probably since the 90s.
Yes, Rosemary.
She means this particular group of people, the people that you can't disclose.
Two and a half months.
Any further business under other? Yes?
I would like to make the request that is there any chance that we could put the page number for the supporting documents near some of these requests, these things we vote on? Just so that you're not going to be full-time kind of tied to those supporting documents?
Moving forward, obviously?
Yes, moving forward, yes. It reports to various entities, start at page 34?
I think what, if I may paraphrase, I believe she wants like right where it says the cemetery commission or the planning commission, she would like then the page number on that same line. And so for Article 15, let's just pick an article, you know, XYZ, page 32, so that they can just jump there when they hit that article.
Yeah.
Just to paraphrase what you were saying.
I don't know. I'd have to check with the Secretary of State's office to know.
The word would be actually on the ballot, right?
Huh?
No, it's just in the book.
No, I mean, you're talking about putting it on the warning what we're just going through, right? Not the index in the book. Right, correct. I'd have to check with the Secretary of State's office. Okay. Because it's a warning that gets posted, so I don't know. Has laws.
Mr. Moderator, if it is appropriate at this time, I would like to move with adjourned.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry, there's still stuff happening here. And do you want to comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
As many of you are aware, the town of Bakersfield has once again found itself in trouble in the Treasury Department. And Treasury is specific. She loves the Treasury. A little over a year ago, we were, we found ourselves without a treasurer and our longtime treasurer from years past came to our rescue and spent months straightening things out and getting ready and training another treasurer. And for reasons beyond our control, we lost our second new treasurer. And Vera. Bless her soul. Once again stepped in. I pulled our puns out of the fryer. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I have one more person back here that I missed.
I'm just curious, every single year we vote on borrowing money to cover until we get taxes. How do we get out of that?
It's not borrowing. It's the anticipation of borrowing. If the taxes that come in don't cover what we need at that time, that just gives us the ability to go and get a loan, it's a tan loan. This year, we could not have to get one. This, that just votes us so that we have the ability to do so in that case.
And you can't ask for more than what we actually voted in for taxes. And then the bank only gives you a percentage of that anyway, so.
Go ahead. Yes, you. State your name.
Stacy Mayner. I just know, back to second constable, we really need one. We really do. I was one of a few people that were either chased or bitten by a dog in this town. I have decided to no longer walk on Alabazotear because I went through months last summer recovering from it. So we just, we really need someone to take care of the problem.
Thank you. So Tammy's hand up?
Tammy?
Well, I was just addressing Melanie. So we, we vote in the budget in March that we actually started spending money on in January. Don't get that money from taxes still. What we need to do is do like the library does. Vote our budget in for the next year, not the year we've already spent 10 months.
It would have to be one.
So we tried that, we tried that approximately three years ago. That was the one where I told you we had like a couple hundred people show up dragging our boots out. It was, we tried to go 18 months, which would have put us on a fiscal year. A one-time shot, 18-month budget.
Oh, I suppose just no percentage?
It was met with a resounding absolutely knock. Because of the tax increase was the reason. For one year. If there's support in the town to try and do that again, we can build that budget and try it again.
Next year, is voting on both sides?
I just, we have some that are like, yes, it makes sense. And we have some that say, I can't work on a fixed income. I understand both sides. Our job here is to do what you want us to do. So if you think that budget will fly this time, we can build it again. It's fairly easy build, I think, at this point, that we're just getting the budget the way we have it. We could do that. We can put it in front of the voters again. But a lot like the Brigham, it was put in front of the voters for many years to fix up the Brigham and for many, many years shot down. And I guess it all depends on where you sit and what's going to pass and what's not. So if it's something the town is interested in, we are willing to do that work.
Thank you, Josh. Kathy?
If we changed it to a fiscal year, changed our fiscal year to July 1st, like the school, then our budget would be the same as there. So we would always be, when we vote in in March, it wouldn't be until the following year.
Yes, that's where the 18 months goes from, sorry.
You had your hand up?
Well, if I'm understanding it right, it was because of the tax increase. Could we possibly do a two-bill system the year that we do it and have our normal thing and then do a six-month? You know, we pay six months, the second bill. Is that mine?
I understand what you're asking.
So we vote it, we just would pay it twice so that it's not have to come up with that kind of money?
Yep, or yeah, or split it down the middle. There are many different ways that we could approach it. You have to get it approved to even do it before we can talk about how we do it.
Okay, I saw. Joyce's hand up?
Well, I was thinking, say, if we didn't have delinquent taxes, we wouldn't have to worry about that. So if we could get our neighbors to pay their taxes on top, we'd be all set. The shortfall in the budget, if you notice what we raised for the general fund and what we actually received for the general fund are very different because our taxes still delinquent. Talk to your neighbors.
For those who are leaving, just to put a caveat, if you're going to leave early, remember there's lunch next door. And I know we went long, but I saw Brian's hand up. Nope, you don't have one now? Yes, sir?
Tom Barrett. I was wondering what the possibility was for 4th of July. Instead of doing it actually on the 4th, like what he does there, it's on the 3rd. If we did it Saturday before the 4th, that way friends and family could come and celebrate the 4th with us or on the 4th.
Ms. Barry, we plan on doing it July 1st, Saturday. So we had to get a task before we put everything else.
July, I work at Smalls, it's mandatory for my, what I do, to be here at their prayer ward.
Any, any further discussion? I will re-entertain your motion? Thank you. Do I have a second to adjourn? Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you, Josh. All those who agree, say aye. Since you're walking out anyhow, all those who say no, everyone agree? You need to adjourn.